We're ready.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for July the 12th, 2023. It's a little after six o'clock. We are here in city council chambers at 345 High Street. We have one public hearing this evening and involves the 2024 tax budget. Will call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Mohler.
Present.
We have the quorum.
Thank you. We're going to start off with a large thing of prayer. The council member, Tim Nab, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
Let us pray. Lord, we are grateful for the countless continued blessings we have worked hard to achieve in the city of Hamilton. We ask you for your guidance this evening and always in the decisions and work which affects our city. Thank you for continuing to bless us with your bounty. Please watch over and keep safe our first responders and all who protect us from harm's way. Bless all in the military as they continue to keep our great nation freedom, free from the turmoil we witness in other struggling nations throughout the world. Lord, thank you for those gathered with us this evening in the work of our city. Excuse me. As we tend to the work diligently to assist all citizens and businesses in Hamilton. We look forward to continued volunteer work and support from our neighborhood teams as we build meaningful trusting, long-term relationships with each other for years to come. We pray these petitions in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, I don't want this to be a meeting situation. But I've got any Mel Brown passed away. I'm not sure if any of you knew Mel Brown. But everybody on council probably knew Mel Brown. But he cared about Hamilton his entire life. He started on the Public Utility Commission and he taught in Hamilton City Schools. He was lifelong an educator, but also one who wanted to learn more himself. Give a moment of silence for Mel Brown, please. Thank you. We now go to special presentations, connotations of verbal reports. And first, we have Home and Garden Awards by Ann Coombs.
Hi, y'all.
Good evening.
Would John come up? Okay. This is an appearance award for John and his wife on 918 Harrison Avenue.
That is one beautiful home.
We're going to come up here.
Yep.
You go first.
Hi. I'm going to go up here. If you want to join us on council, would you be okay? You're going too far now. That is one beautiful home. You know, you've got the flag flying and the blocks and all it...
When I arrived, he was out there working.
That just takes a lot of work to keep it looking that good. Well, looks beautiful for Harrison Avenue and we all need to work on our homes, especially me, so it looks anything close to that. Thank you so very much. And Ann, thank you for helping to get this program going and continuing it. So the Hamilton, Ohio wants to give Hank and John Morgan of 918 Harrison Avenue the certificate of recognition for receiving the July 2023 Home and Garden Appearance Award and for dedication to keeping the city of Hamilton beautiful. So we give this to you and thank you. And what maybe people didn't see is that photo that you see up there is on the Appearance Appreciation Award. So now, so tell us a little bit about what you did up there and what do you want to tell us to do to make it look as good as that?
I just buy the plants. I go to Oxford Greenhouse, buy them, put them in the ground and just water them.
I'm going to drop this microphone right now. If it's that easy, then I'm just going to do it. It does look beautiful. Thank you very much. Because you said that so succinctly. Take my water, please. I didn't open it. I didn't open it. That's our water. You can water your plants with it or you can drink it. One for his wife? Oh, heck, yeah. Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, he doesn't even mess with the plants. So give her a water anyway. Have a round of applause for him. Have a good evening.
You, too.
And as always, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All righty. Great. See you then.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation. 20 High Street.
Good evening. Hello. Joshua, Mayor Mohler, council members and all of you, thank you very much for having me here today. Very, very excited to be here, to be talking about this project. This has been a long time coming and I'm sure, you know, every group who comes in says that, but I like to think I'm a little bit unique in that sense. I'm from Cincinnati. Thank you. I'm from Cincinnati. I went to University of Cincinnati. I grew up just down the road in Mason. My mother-in-law is from Hamilton, long, has had a long history here in Hamilton, going back to, she's got relatives that were, you know, factory workers at Champion Paper. So I actually remember when I was younger in high school, I drove through Hamilton. It was probably late 90s, early 2000s, and I remember thinking, I took a wrong turn and I need to get out of here. So it's been fun and interesting. We've been kind of talking about this project for the last two years. It's been really interesting, although a short period of time, we've seen a lot happen, especially with kind of the opening of Spooky Nook. But I know it's been a long effort and it's so much, there's so much to see still to come with everything that's happening. So a lot of kudos to all of you. And I think we can talk all day about how well you guys have done with bringing opportunity and bringing this community back up, but really, I think a lot more kudos to the community. You know, it's, we've seen other communities where the public don't support projects and don't support a lot of the initiatives and they fail. And so it's great to see that, you know, with the official, government officials and the community, it's such a synchronized effort and synchronized team and you guys are all doing it so well together. So we're happy to be part of it. So I'm here to talk about the 20 High Street project. We're here to talk about the hotel development that we've been looking at and we've been talking about for a long time coming. So I could talk a lot about this project. I could probably talk about for five hours, but I've been told I only have about five minutes. So I'm going to try to go through it quickly and, you know, while floor plans are interesting to me, I know they're not interesting to everyone else. So I'll try to touch on kind of surface level for the most part and really kind of highlight some of the interesting elements to it. So. So my name is Amro Kamel, by the way. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself there. So I'm the founder and managing partner for Spectrum Investment Group. This is, I'm one of one, one of multiple others that are joint venturing on this project. So our partners are Acumen Development. So Spectrum is based out of Indiana. Acumen is developed, is based out of Utah. And together, you know, this project kind of comes together. We bring unique experiences and unique skill sets and I don't think individually we can do it on our own, but together we're a strong team. So just a little bit about who we are. Acumen is a hotel developer at heart, developer at heart, but really specialized in hotels for years and years. They've done about 125, 126 hotel developments throughout the country, over $4 billion in total project costs. And I wanted to highlight really 100 of those projects, about 100 of them. You know, although every project is unique in and of itself, they've done a lot of rehabilitations and redevelopments and kind of revitalizations of existing buildings. So I think with that experience and track record, you know, we're well set up for the 20 High Street project and to really bring it back to life. Spectrum, so my group, we're, you know, really our specialization is to identify unique opportunities. You know, we invest in a multitude of different types of properties, from multifamily apartments to healthcare properties, medical office and student housing. So, but really, the kind of what we enjoy doing the most is looking for opportunities and then bringing the resources and the team together to execute upon it. So that's how Acumen came into the project and here we are. So, and this is just a couple of pictures I just wanted to kind of highlight here. I won't really talk about Spectrum, but with Acumen, the one on the, on my left, the brown building there that you can see, that's an old Radisson in Aurora, Colorado. And I wanted to talk about that one, you know, primarily because it was an abandoned building at the time when they worked, when they began working on the project, it was a Radisson. And they converted that property to apartments. So although that building is much newer than the 20 High Street project, there were a multitude of complexities, a lot of, you know, various issues that they had to work through to be able to convert a property of that size, you know, back to something that's useful. So, you know, seeing that among, you know, many other projects, they've, you know, they've, I think they bring a lot of unique perspective to this opportunity. And then the one over on the right there, that's a, that's a new development, a new hotel that they did in Atlanta. And it was, it was unique in the sense that they had such small amount of space to be able to work in and you can see kind of the high rise and the crane up the top of the picture, which we're obviously anticipating with this project. High Street is such a highly trafficked area. There's so much around it that's already vibrant and that's going on and, you know, we want to try to reduce the, you know, the disruption there as much as possible. I know you all have probably heard a lot about hotels lately and kind of the lack of availability of hotels. And so what I'm hoping is that we can kind of stick out a little bit. You know, this is such a unique and centric building in Hamilton and it's got so much character. And I think what we want to do is really bring, you know, a different type of hotel, a different type of offering, you know, unique and be able to kind of stick out among the crowd. So we'll talk a little bit about that. So what are our goals for the project, really just kind of high level? Obviously bring back life to the project, life to the building. You know, Municipal Brew Works has done a phenomenal job with bringing, you know, the community around that building, but, you know, and obviously all the other businesses in there, you know, help bring that building together and help, you know, at least provide some sort of, you know, movement within the building instead of it being completely vacant. But really, we want to, you know, multiply that times 10 and bring the community back in there. You know, there's so much that's around there that's, that brings life to the greater community and we want to be able to be part of that. So, you know, bringing that property back up to its heyday is kind of where we want to get with the project. Obviously, it's a historical building. There's so much, you know, so much history there and really what, we don't want to, you know, give this a standard hotel look. We want to incorporate the history there. We want to incorporate the, you know, the community's, you know, memories and everything as much as we can with the design of the hotel. And then really, I think, you know, one of the big things, obviously, I think it goes without being said, is to give the travelers and people that are coming in for the tournaments and all the other events that happen here in Hamilton, give them a unique reason to stay here and enjoyable stay experience. You know, there's so many hotels in Mason, there's so many hotels in Liberty Center, there's so many other places they can stay, which obviously other, much further, but, you know, it's still an option. So how can we keep those people in Hamilton? How can you keep them involved? How can we keep them going to the restaurants and being involved in the community more so? So that's what we want to, we want to bring to them. I believe this picture was showed at the last meeting, but I wanted to just highlight some of the elements again, just to kind of talk through. But this is, this is kind of what we're looking at from an amenities and feature perspective. So we will have a valet parking. You'll see there on the left-hand side. Really, I think the exterior of the building doesn't look a whole lot different than what everyone sees every day, with the exception of that building in the back. Really, in order to make this project viable long-term, we need to be able to stack our hotel rooms. We're looking at 159 rooms total. And in order to do that efficiently, we, the addition of that building in the back was vital and couldn't have happened. And so I think that leaves us with the ability to, instead of, you know, some of the previous iterations where we had looked at, you know, filling the existing building with nothing but rooms, it gives us the opportunity to, you know, create venue spaces and gathering spaces and really kind of more interesting elements that aren't rooms in the main building, in the original building. And I think that will help bring not only the travelers, but also the community as part of it. So really kind of highlighting that original building is the key there. So like I said, I just want to touch on just a couple of things as far as amenities that we're looking to offer and kind of tying it back to, you know, how can we, how can we be part of the food and beverage district that's over there? How can we be part of downtown and really make this property, you know, it's really right off the bridge. It's one of the first things you see when you come into Hamilton off the bridge. So how can we bring it to life and be able to kind of show there's something going on here? So one of the things that we're doing, so, you know, this will be a boutique hotel, a boutique style hotel that is flagged by one of the major companies, Marriott, Hyatt or Hilton. So, but what they allow for is they have a variety of different brands that we can, you know, apply in terms of design and look and feel. And, you know, each of them have that ability to have a boutique hotel. So this is what it's going to look like. It's not going to be your standard hotel that you see anywhere else. This will be one of a kind hotel. You know, even though the Marriott's and the Hilton's of the world, they offer this ability to design hotels like this, each one, what they pride themselves on in that offering is each and every single one under that brand is unique in and of itself. A lot of times, actually, most of the time, I think none of them will actually have Marriott or Hilton on the building itself. They always give the, each property its own unique name. The one that's been, we've thrown out for quite a while. I'm not saying this will be the final, the Mueller Building. So I mean, this is the Mueller Building, or I'm sorry, the Mueller Hotel. This building is, you know, originally the Mueller Building. And so we want to retain that name and be able to retain the history and a lot of the elements of that. So the reason I say that is because, you know, again, it will be able to be something that's unique that you can't get anywhere else. And obviously, for the people that are coming in from out of town, that's kind of where we want to stick out. So one of the elements that we're incorporating into our design, and it's really part of kind of offering that, offering something within that Dora District area, offering something, you know, there's all those retail outlets or, I'm sorry, the food and beverage outlets under Markham Apartments. There's so much traffic there. We were here about three weeks ago and got an opportunity to see and actually be, enjoy some of the different food and beverage opportunities there. But what we want to do is we want to expand on what Brew Works has done. They have such a strong following and complement them. We don't want to offer something that competes with them. We want to be able to complement them as best as possible. So one of the things we've talked about and included in our plan is a speakeasy lounge. What's cool about these, if you've ever been to one, they're usually pretty small, you know, anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 square feet. They're pretty intimate. I apologize if those pictures aren't very big, but they're dark and really they're supposed to kind of, you know, give that feel of prohibition era environment. So, you know, if you're not familiar with what speakeasies are, they're basically, you know, hidden bars that the people used to go to during the prohibition and you didn't talk much about it. So there's usually a password that you had to give when you walked in the door. So we want to create that kind of experience and kind of that fun atmosphere and really touch on, you know, bring back kind of some of the elements of Hamilton's history. So, you know, we know Hamilton has the moniker of Little Chicago. You know, we want to do it in a fun and interesting way. So how can we incorporate a lot of those aspects into our design and really kind of building upon that uniqueness and kind of one of a kind experience? Another element that we're, we have included in our plans is there's an outdoor area right now, right in front of Spooky Nook, or I'm sorry, we're in front of Municipal Brew Works, where they have their benches and kind of seating area during the warm months. We want to take that area and kind of, you know, turn it over into an actual seating area and a gathering space. So, you know, you can see here, some of these images are from other hotels. You know, right now it's a parking lot. We want to turn it into more than that. So, you know, it really gives us that opportunity to kind of bring friends and family together. You know, we've talked about having cornhole boards there. We've talked about having a variety of games, really having people come, sit and enjoy themselves, you know, and I think, you know, that space lends itself very, very well for it. I think it ties, like I said, you know, it ties in very, very well with all the, with all the options that are at Markham. And I think it really ties well with everything that happens at Rivers Edge Amphitheater. You know, the pre and post, you know, event guests, you know, and visitors, they want something close, they want something easy. And I think this is right down, you know, right down the way. And I think we can, we can keep those people here, you know, before and after the, those type of events and really make it something unique and interesting. And really, the key is just to keep people here, you know. I don't know any sort of numbers or any sort of figures on how many people come for, you know, one or a specific event here in Hamilton and then go off to their hotels or go off back to their communities. But, you know, there surely is that type of thing that happens and really, how can we keep people here as much as possible? That's it. So I'm kind of short and sweet as much as I can. I did leave my contact information there. You know, one of my roles within our group, within our partnership is to be kind of the community-facing, build the relationships with the community. Obviously, we build relationships with the city officials, but really be open and kind of open door. You know, we want questions. We want to be able to meet everyone. And, you know, we've got years and years to come in this community and we're excited about it. So we have to get that opportunity to meet everyone. But that's my contact information. Feel free to reach out anytime if you've got questions. Not a problem at all.
Questions or comments from council? First, I want to say thank you for considering calling the Mueller Building. I mean, that's the architect who did that, as well as other buildings around this city. And you had it there, restore historic features. So you're going to restore and preserve what you can of that building?
Yeah, I mean, there's the statues that are outside that are timeless. You know, we've looked at how can we, can, you know, wash those and revitalize them back to kind of what they once were. The exterior of the building is a really unique kind of sandstone construction that doesn't exist anymore. We want to be able to maintain that facade as best as possible, wash it, give it a nice cleaning, but, you know, not tear it down. So a lot of these things, they just don't happen anymore. You don't see that type of architecture. You don't see that type of construction style. And so, you know, you know, if we get rid of it, it's, you'll never see it again. So how can we keep that for years and generations to come?
Please.
First, I'm glad that you just said that because I was trying to remember how you quoted that to us a couple of weeks ago because I have shared with so many citizens when they ask what the intention is, just the uniqueness of it. You can't build this anywhere anymore and that's what you're going to do. But can you address the mural that's in the council chamber? Because I've also had a lot of questions about that. This is now on the record.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a little complicated, kind of what we thought through about that. But, so that Mueller mural is in the old courtroom and that courtroom is two stories high. So it's a very unique space in the building. And one of the things we've talked about is kind of having double stacked hotel rooms. So you'd walk into that in the main entrance. On either side, there'd be hotel rooms that you can access through, you know, catwalk or, or, you know, ladder system. But, you know, right when you walk in, you'd see that mural. So we'd leave kind of a space there. And one of the cool things that we've kind of talked about is the way the rooms could be configured. One of the rooms on the edge that sits right in front of that Mueller, that mural would have a window that looks out towards it. In addition to a window, obviously, that looks exteriorly, but it would be kind of a unique room, you know, one or two of them that, you know, a guest can elect to stay in. But yeah, we definitely want to keep it and we want to incorporate. There will be a way that we can keep it.
Okay. Thank you.
For sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
I know that Aaron Hufford's had a conversation with the daughter of the person that painted the mural. She's an elected official in Greater Cincinnati. We'll continue that conversation with Amro and his group, but we had a vision also of, we've talked to some historic preservationists, that there is a way to also remove the mural and relocate it somewhere else. I do like the idea of incorporating it if it can be seen by people, but if we don't think that it's giving it enough justice, if you will, we certainly can have that conversation with them and also talk to council about the relocation of that mural.
That is important to our citizens. It's the founding of our city and it was created by Willard. That Willard is his son. I don't know what the actual artist's name is. What's his name?
Jack.
Jack Willard.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, hopefully it'll be able to be seen by all because that's kind of us.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. It's beautiful.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Amro, I know you had spoken with Jim Goodman extensively about continuity of Municipal Brew Works and many of the residents here have a fond liking for what you're going to be able to do, but also then the continuity of Jim's business at the new Mueller.
Yeah.
And what that will mean. So if you want to expand on that a little bit about the relationship you forged with Jim and continuing his business and things?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, Jim is a friend and, you know, I've known him now for probably about two years. We've got the opportunity, our group and his group, to sit down and talk. And, you know, the way we see Municipal Brew Works is they're such an anchor to that building and to the community. And they've, like I said, they've kind of paved the road for us, for that building and to really bring it back. You know, without them, you know, there may not be a strong presence in that building. I know there's obviously other people and other businesses that are there, but, you know, they're a big piece of it and I think they're one of the first to come into that building and take over that space. So, yeah, you know, our goal has always been to keep them and to really work them hand in hand. I mean, they're our partners. I mean, you know, the relationship from a legal perspective may be kind of a tenant-owner relationship, but, you know, we don't look at it like that. We look at it as they're our partners and they help bring, you know, people to our, to the hotel and vice versa. We want to be able to bring people to them and collaborate. So we've talked about, you know, bringing them in on some of the design conversations and, you know, how can we complement their outlets and vice versa? So, yeah, we are, we are very excited to keep the relationship strong with them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you all.
Next, we have Butler County Auditor's Office overview and a triennial value update by Nancy Nix, our Butler County Auditor.
Would you mind terribly much if I grabbed my drink real quick? No. They wouldn't let me bring it in and I'm a little thirsty before I start. Do you mind?
No problem. Mayor's handing out water.
What's in that drink? Thank you. Okay, I have some handouts. I'll pass around.
Motion to accept. So moved.
Second.
motion to remove Vice Mayor Ryan, second to the council member Vaughn to accept documents presented to us by Butler County Auditor Nancy Nix.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council and City Manager Joshua Smith. I appreciate you allowing me some time this evening. I wanted to, I'm trying to get out to all the cities and townships and eventually school boards just to introduce myself. Of course, I know most all of you for many years, but I still wanted to come and talk about the auditor's office briefly and also the triennial update that has been in the news so much. I want to compliment you as my predecessor did. I've worked in Hamilton almost 20 years now. I've been driving from Middletown a long time, now Liberty Township, and the transformation has been awesome. I just am really proud of the work you do and the way that Hamilton unifies the citizenry and the council and the foundation and the chamber. And I say this sort of as an insider and an outsider. So my compliments to you. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I was on city council in Middletown from 2002 through 2005. So I know the work you do and I know what it takes to stay together and get things passed. It's not always easy and so I really admire you all. So I've been in the auditor's office for almost five months and before that I was 16 years as governor. 16 years as county treasurer. So the Auditor's Office has not been a, well, it's been a huge change. I'm not going to say it's not been, but I already knew a lot about it. So the treasurer, as you know, is the tax collector and portfolio manager and acts as the county's bank. The auditor is actually so much more than that. And so I, the joke among the Auditors Association is that when the state doesn't know what to do with duties, they give it to the auditor. So that's why we go into so many different areas. But I sent, I gave you a handout, what does the auditor do? First, we're the chief financial officer of the county, and that's in all 88 counties. We have to approve all purchases, make sure it's got a proper public purpose, and we produce the county's financial statements and act as the county's payroll agent. We also do weights and measures. We must inspect all commercial devices for scales, anything that is a measurement-type purchase. In 2022, we measured, or we had to inspect over 7,600 devices, and including the Butler County Fair. There are scales out there. So our weights and measures personnel will be out there making sure those scales are accurate. We do dog licensing. As you know, if you own a dog, we have to give you your dog tag. Vendor licensing so that the state can collect sales tax. Cigarette licensing. All transfers of real estate go through our office with the conveyance forms, any changes of ownership. And what gets a lot of attention is our third floor in the admin building. In fact, my office looks right at the mural that you're talking about. I'd really like for you to take that building off the county's hands so we can get back down here to this building, but I don't know if that's anything you can control. But our office down there at 130 High Street, the third floor is our appraisal floor, and that is where we do all of, we have six on-staff appraisers, three of whom are certified appraisers. That gets a lot of attention because evaluations are, of course, used for your property tax bills, and those do get a ton of attention. But we must appraise residential, agricultural, industrial, and commercial over 160,000 parcels. And then, last but not least, is the tax calculations that our office performs. We take those assessed values and based on levies that have been passed in your community, use those to produce the tax bills that we then hand off to the treasurer for billing. So the Auditor's Office touches just about everyone in the county, whether you know it or not. We are so fortunate to have an amazing staff. I know every government official says they have an amazing staff, but we really do. They are consummate professionals. I inherited all but one, and I'm very, very fortunate that way. They're very serious people, very public service-minded, as I'm sure your City of Hamilton employees are. Our motto in the Auditor's Office is transparency, honesty, and outreach. So if we make a mistake, we'll own up to it. We want people, when they call in, to know they're getting an honest answer. We want, when people read the press or see us speaking on air, that they believe we're telling the truth. And also outreach. We have a Facebook present. We try to keep our website very up to date, and I'm here tonight as part of the outreach part. So that's in a nutshell, the Auditor's Office. And now I'm going to, because I know you have a long meeting, and I used to sit through these long meetings myself, I will talk about the triennial update. That's where all the attention is right now. As you've probably read, and many of you have attended either our summits or the driveway at Scott Reynolds House, several of you were there as well. So you've heard a lot of this, but maybe the audience has not. But it is the auditor's job to reappraise every six years, and then in the third year after that is the triennial update to get properties within market conditions and move the values closer to market because it's those three-year cycles that are used in the preparation of the tax bills. And this is Butler County's triennial update, and we're hitting it at the peak market. Now, statewide, 88 counties, there are 13 or so doing the triennial update, but there are 40-some that are being reappraised. But all the news has been on Butler County because we are at the very beginning. We got our numbers very early compared to other people. We were screaming about them because the tax commissioner takes our conveyance forms and recommends an increase. So let me go back to 2020. I was still treasurer at the time, but the former auditor had received from the tax commissioner based on conveyance forms through the Butler County Auditor's Office, a recommended increase of 20% in 2020. And that would have covered the three previous years, 17, 18, and 19. So the tax commissioner is valuing, as of January 1st, 2020, based on the prior three years. The former auditor balked at that 20% increase, obviously not knowing what was coming down the pike, and refused to bill at those higher levels because the Butler County Auditor's Office has in-house appraisers. We feel like we know our market values. So he contested those values and took it to the Board of Tax Appeals. But in the meantime, he submitted an abstract for the treasurer to bill at the lower amounts. So they were saying 20%, he was saying 14% to 17%. He said, Nancy, treasurer, you bill these at the 14% to 17%. So that we did that for 2021, 2020, 2021, and 2022. Lo and behold, we finally get a decision from the Board of Tax Appeals in September of 2022, and the former auditor lost that case at the Board of Tax Appeals. So that resulted in, for the billing this year, 2023, in February, I was still treasurer, I had to send out bills with retroactive taxes for those years, three years. And Hamilton bore the brunt of that. Hamilton, Westchester, Fairfield, and Fairfield Township, the tax commissioner needed to move the values enough, and there was enough property or valuation in those four areas to move the needle to get Butler County to the 20% cumulative or countywide increase. So that's just the history of it. We lost the case, and now we're set for a triennial update. And I'm sorry if I'm getting too far in the weeds. I hope you understand all this. But we're in the triennial update this year based on 2020, 2021, and 22, and they said 42% increase countywide. Of course, the commissioners, well, we were calling it out, and the commissioners convened a summit, and some of you were there, to our lawmakers because the tax commissioner is going to do what they're going to do. They're appointed by the governor. Our lawmakers make laws. And so we went to our lawmakers. All of them were very receptive, came and tried to help. And so we tried to convince them to use a three-year average instead of just this 2022 value amount, and tried to get it into the budget. Thomas Hall has a bill, House Bill 187. We were not successful, or they were not successful, in getting the three-year average. And so we are still mired up in the recommendation of a 42% countywide increase by our tax commissioner. And that's where it stands right now. We are continuing to try to get our values down, and when people ask, well, what's my neighborhood? What's my house? We have none of that information. We're still way up here in the talks with the tax commissioner. We are hoping to try to get, I hate to even throw out this number, low 30s. We're going to try very hard because I think all the attention that the tax commissioner was getting from our lawmakers and the meetings they were having, and all the media focused on it, I think they are starting to be more receptive to the auditors across the state that are dealing with this. We're just on the very front end. So they are listening, we think, hope, but we will know in coming weeks if we can get these lower valuations, I should say, lower value increases instead of the jaw-dropping 42%. But there's another component to these increases in values. And I wish I could give you better news for Hamilton. Like last night, I spoke in Westchester. There's the 20 mil floor, which applies to school district levies. And most levies, like fire levies, EMS, as values increase, rates reduce, so those levies bring in the same amounts. But school districts are protected. Once they reach a 20 mil floor, those rates will no longer reduce. And so as values increase, rates stay the same, and the tax bills will increase for those areas at the 20 mil floor, which is eight of our 10 school districts. So Butler County has hit all kinds of walls this year. Lakota and Fairfield School Districts are the only ones not at the 20 mil floor. Hamilton, Middletown are at the 20 mil floor. So we're looking at high tax increases in the eight of the 10 school districts that are at the 20 mil floor, and we're trying to find ways to mitigate that. I do know Senator Lang says we're not done. He's going to try to push for a cap on what a property tax increase can be in a year. We don't know if Thomas Hall's House Bill 187 is dead or not. We're still in meetings. I'm meeting with Commissioner Dixon on Friday. So this is just, it's still a work in progress. We don't want to send out high tax bills. We don't want people to be foreclosed out of their homes. We do understand that the elderly are the least able to pay. Also, young families don't have easy ways to pay. I'll just, as a comparison, Hamilton to Middletown, I worry about Hamilton, but Middletown's bearing the biggest brunt this time with the highest tax rates in the county, with the biggest increases at the 20 mil floor and the least ability to pay. So Hamilton is also not in a real advantageous position being at the 20 mil floor, but we are working on it, and we do take it very seriously. I will also say that the auditor is just an arm of the state. You know, we have no authority whatsoever. It is up to the tax commissioner and our lawmakers to make these changes and to provide the relief. Now, we've given them a list of things they can do. There's homestead exemption, there's rollbacks, there's credits, but all those take money from the state. So the state would, in fact, be paying part of your property tax bills. So they are amenable to some things and not other things. And there are also counties that aren't dealing with this. We're a victim of our success in Butler County. We've had tremendous growth, and so we have a lot higher valuations hitting us. Some counties don't have this issue, and so they're not interested in changing the law. And we have to get 99 state reps and 33 state senators and a governor to all sign off on it. So I just wanted to be here in person and be here for questions, let you know our office is always open to you. If you do have questions, I've sent every single one of you my business card. It's got my cellphone on there. We want our office to be known as honest, transparent, and providing necessary outreach. So at this time, I would be glad to take any questions, and I wish I had better news for you.
I've got a pretty simple question. Do all options for relief rest the state legislature?
Yes.
Every single one?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no discretion in Butler County, the state tax commissioner?
There is, I would say, and the Butler County Commissioners did do this, they provided relief from their inside millage, and it cost them about 18 million. So there is relief that any city or township can provide, but when we're talking about this, it's the schools. I mean, that's where, two-thirds of your tax bills are schools. So you can do things here and there. The Commissioners already took it on the chin with that 18 million last year. Developmental Disabilities did it for two years. They reduced their millage. So unless you're going to be tweaking things, and we have run numbers for different townships and cities, what they could give back, it just, it pales in comparison to the schools. And then we've thought, well, can we reduce schools' millage here and there? But that law kicks in again, and it would just switch other rates because they are so protected by law.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Nancy, thank you for sharing the complexity of what we are all being presented. Last week in our parade, I had the pleasure of walking and talking with residents, and many of them were interested in what the taxation might be, that 42% range. Is there a firm, I'm going to call it a drop dead date, that the decision must be made that there aren't any, the stroke of midnight hits on whatever that date may be? Is there a date in mind or not?
Well, tax bills go out February of 2024. We won't have our values complete until the fall, and we won't have rates back from the state to produce those tax bills until probably early January. So anything could happen, but the sooner the better. The clock is ticking. So I think that's the only answer I have for you on that.
Thank you. At least there's a little bit of clarity. People were saying, Tim, is it the end of July? Is it the end of August? I said, there hasn't been a firm, but as you said, February is around the corner.
February is when the bills go out.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Nancy, first of all, thank you. Well, congratulations on walking into this mess.
Oh, thanks.
I think we've got the right person there, but I want to thank you for coming in. And in the four years, I guess, going on that I've been here, this is the first time I've seen this office come in here and talk about it, and I appreciate you being open about it and hope to see you back here again. Kind of doing some summaries on this because honestly, there's a lot I'm learning off of this right now. So I do appreciate you being very transparent, and I know you do a good job in here.
Thank you, Councilman.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Nancy, is there anything the average citizen can do? Are there phone calls? Is there anything that they can do? Because I think most of us feel helpless.
Yes.
Like we're just sitting and waiting for something to happen.
We tell everyone, contact your legislators, and they are engaged, believe me. They have really gone to bat, and we thought we were going to get that budget amendment through, which would have still been bad, but it would have lessened it. They, I mean, I did an interview last week, and I just said, save money. I mean, just to protect yourself so you can afford that tax bill. And there's no way to tell you, an individual, because it depends on the levies, your neighborhoods, any myriad of factors that go into a tax bill. So we can't even give an idea of what the increase will be for a certain neighborhood. 42% countywide, it could be 50 in some neighborhoods, it could be 24 in others. And it's, I think it's a school funding problem. I also think when you look at all the inflation we've had, housing prices have gone up 120% in the last 10 years. Incomes have only gone up 30% in the last 10 years. So that gap has just grown and grown, and I think it's our school funding model. We need some school reform, but the schools have to get their money from somewhere, and it seriously is just a legislative fix that they have to work together in Columbus.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Nancy, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And I really appreciate you fighting alongside some of our council members here and other communities, bringing this issue to light, to educate, and to be transparent. A lot of folks are just, they're angry because they're angry, or they're angry because they just don't clearly understand what's getting ready to happen. So please know we're here to keep fighting with you, and if there's anything else we can do that you need help with, please let us know.
Just be in their ear. George, Sarah, et al. So, okay. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have engineering update by Rich Engel, Director of Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. It's been a while since I've been here, so I've got some updates for you to listen to tonight. The, excuse me, Traffic Signal System project continues to go well. We've made some significant signal timing changes to the High Main Corridor. We have reduced the travel times, delay, and overall congestion on High Street. I hope you have noticed that as you travel through the city at various times. We continue to collect and review the data. We are not stopping on our changes. We're still making small changes as much as we can. One of the next issues that we're going to be working on exclusively are the side street signal timing changes. We wanted to get the main corridor in place and working as best we can first. Now we'll be working on the side streets, which means if you've come up Now we'll be working on the side streets, which means if you come up from a side street at to the intersection with High or Main, we're going to be working on that signal changes now as well. Also, many of our communication on the corridor are still using cellular. We are working on making it a fiber connection. First, we had to get the fiber installed along the corridor. The contractor installs it from the fiber to the cabinet, and then the cabinet to the signal itself, and now our city crews have to make that final connection onto our main fiber network. So that's what's going on right now. And then also, we're working on the EMS preemption. We expect that to go live later this summer. That will allow our safety services to respond to emergency calls much faster. They will have green signals through their route, and one of the main items I'd like you to remember is the fact that if they come to an intersection, whether they turn right or left, if they put their turn signal on, that signal will then transfer to them making that turn and heading down the next route. So that'll be important for them to remember as they progress through the city. Our Fairway Hills subdivision water main and resurfacing project, the water main construction itself, contractor is mobilizing next week, and the actual physical construction will begin July 24. We expect it to be complete towards the end of October or into November, and then the concrete curb sidewalk and drive approaches will then begin through the end of this year and into the spring of next year. And then pavement milling and resurfacing is to be determined. That will really depend on the subcontractor paving companies' schedule, when they can come in and do that work. This is a aerial view of the project. It looks very similar to what we have presented previously. However, we, due to budget constraints, we had to remove some of the project. The Fairborn Drive piece of the project, we were not able to include that. We were limited on the OPWC funding and our local share as well. Another important project we've been working on is the Bilstein Bridge Rehabilitation Project. We are nearly complete with the construction documents and the drawings, waiting on final approval from ODOT and CSX. We anticipate bidding this project in December and beginning construction early next spring. It will be about a nine-to-10-month project, and this will require the complete closure of Bilstein at that location. So our connection with Fairfield through that route will be disconnected until this project is complete, although this is an important project, and we're getting significant funding from ODOT on this project. Tidesville Road Project, we're nearly complete with obtaining easements. We have just a couple of parcels left. We expect to bid this project in September. Construction will be about 12 months, and then this will require very close coordination with the businesses and residents for accessibility. We will have the project broken into phases so that we can keep access from both end, from either end during the other part of the construction. But we will certainly be communicating this to the residents and the businesses along Tidesville before all of this happens. Northwest Washington Boulevard Water Service Replacement. We've had lots of comments and concerns from citizens regarding this and the detours. The Eaton Avenue to Leo Drive piece of the project is complete. Now they're working on the Leo Drive to Annie Lou Drive piece. It's underway. We anticipate completion by mid-August, and remember, this project was part of the, was needed to be done before we did the resurfacing project, which is part of our 2023 concrete repair and resurfacing. And they're actually, once we get the piece between Leo Drive and Hermay Drive complete, that will be opened up, Hermay intersection will be opened up, and then they'll have that last section that's not a complete block between Hermay and Annie Lou, but it's about half the block will need to be done, and then that will be complete. So we're nearing, getting closer to the end of that project as well. And just some of the projects we've talked about previously, the Pyramid Hill Boulevard, concrete sidewalks, drive approaches, and medians have been completed, and that's important because now we're ready for when ODOT comes in to do the resurfacing next year sometime. We're all done with our piece of the project that had to be done before they did the resurfacing. The City of Fairfield has completed the Joe Nuxhall Way resurfacing project. The Eden Parks Drive sanitary sewer and the Allstater Bender sanitary sewer projects are both substantially complete as well. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just one question, Rich. At the New London West Fairway intersection, the block right there across from Baden High School, my understanding is that will, at some points during construction, be only one lane. Is that correct?
On New London?
On West Fairway, there. Or will that street be closed? A lot of the Baden High School traffic comes through there, if they're coming from, say, Millville Avenue, and they cut across and go through, and that's directly across from the school. So I've had a few questions about, are we going to be able to get in and out of Fairway off of New London?
We always try and keep two-way traffic as much as possible, yes.
Okay.
I don't think we would limit it to just one direction.
Okay, so it may be one direction, but traffic will go both ways, so maybe a stoplight or people out directing traffic?
I will have to check into that. I don't have the exact answer on how we're going to set up the maintenance of traffic on that, but I will get back to you on that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Rich, got a question. Will Northwest Washington Boulevard be open on August the 18th?
It's our plan to have it open before that, yes. Is that when school starts?
That's when Coach Lauer's got a football game that night. I need you to clear the way. You can be the blocker. But no, that's going to be a huge game. A lot of people going driving down Northwest Washington Boulevard, so that would be ideal for all of our citizens for that. But I know you're working hard to get it done.
August 18th is a Friday night, Rich, so we're hopeful that that might happen by Thursday?
He's laughing. Thank you.
I'm not making any promises. But I will convey that message, certainly.
So many projects going on at once, and I know a lot of positive things are happening due to your work and your team's work.
Yeah, I think our staff is doing a tremendous job of getting these projects moved forward, and especially obtaining grant fundings for these projects as well. It's important for the city, especially when we talk about tax increases, that this is very helpful from our perspective.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, before we continue on to the agenda, prior to the presentation by the Butler County Auditor, Ms. Nancy Nix, we had-
You didn't ask for a "aye" to say, to accept it?
Right, we had the motion, we had the motion from Vice Mayor Ryan, and second by Council Member Vaughn. We still need a voice vote to pass that motion.
All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
I knew I missed that. I didn't know when the right way to say it, when to say it. Audience of citizens, opportunity for individuals to make comments during this part of the agenda, or you may make your comments at the time when the actual item is up for a vote on the council floor. Individuals who wish to speak are required to sign this blue public speaking book. You're allowed up to five minutes. We have three people who signed, one being Jim Lottman. I don't see Jim here.
He took a call. He took a call.
Okay. Mark Kayler.
Mr. Lottman completely left. He took his vehicle and he's gone.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, my name is Mark Kayler. I live at 2247 Mossy Grove. Last week, we had the misfortune of having a small water lane, water leak in our neighborhood, and we called the city, and within an hour, we had a crew out there. They worked all day, all night, 12 o'clock at night. They are finally completing their work, and it just pours down rain. These six or eight guys got absolutely soaked. You've got a good group of people, and it needs to be recognized. Okay, so that'll start with that one.
Well, you could end with that one.
Well, no, no, I always bring my notebook.
You can make sure that Edwin and Jim and the city knows that. Okay.
Okay. So the properties, almost all of them have been bought at, quote, Second, Third Street where there were the houses. What's the plans to do with that property?
I was typing the email. What was the address?
What was, I'm sorry, what was the address?
Basically, we're Second Street and Third Street coming to join each other by Spooky Nook across from that. All of that property's been purchased. What's the plans for you?
Oh, yeah, thank you for that clarification. So that is owned by the Hamilton Community Authority, and the purpose was for ancillary parking for the Spooky Nook development. I think, I mean, I don't want to speak for the owner or the HCA, but they've been observing the traffic patterns at the busier tournaments, and they already have the overflow lot on North Third Street. It's not getting a ton of use right now, so I think they're trying to evaluate what their actual parking needs will be going into the future, and once they reach a conclusion with that, it's, that area will, A, either be parking, B, it could be further developed into a use that would be complementary to that area. Actually, I'll stop there. It's probably going to be one of those two things.
Okay. So the city still owns the power plant. What are we going to do with this?
Listen, we have all kinds of plans. Unfortunately, it's hard to pull them all off at one time, but-
I understand that.
We try to prioritize them, and I can tell you that, and Edwin Porter, I don't think is with us tonight, but, yeah. Hello, Mr. Williams. I was just sending you an email. There you are, but, based on your comments, but actually, the man you need to talk to on the way out, but, but there is some things left with that. I mean, we still utilize that power plant infrequently. Actually, Christine Carr is with us tonight. Christine, how many days last year do you think that we actually used that plant, if at all, for peaking purposes? Yeah, so there is, we do use it for peaking purposes, to keep rates low during high-load events. At some point, I'm sure that will not be the case in the next couple of years, but we are already strategically thinking about what that could be going into the future. So I don't anticipate anything happening anytime in the next few years, but it is a beautiful asset. The original part of that building, I want to say, was constructed in the early 1900s, and it's a real beautiful building, and I am sure that as we see the Spooky Nook development continue to flourish, the Crawford-Hoing development take hold, that that whole area will see just more and more development interest, redevelopment interest.
Okay, I mean, you've also got Cornell Light Corporation. Is this still open?
It is.
It is? Okay.
Absolutely.
You drive by, doors are always closed, you never see anybody? Okay. From there, basically across the street from where Crawford-Hoing is doing his work, there's another very large building, and I'm not sure what the name of it is, but it is totally overgrown.
Yeah, that was the former Western States Building, I think that you're referencing. It's on the south side of that big parking lot?
Yep.
Yep. There is a private user in that building, and I have noticed myself, driving up and down that corridor, that it is not maintained well at times. We'll certainly look into that and see if we can have some more conversation. We have had conversations with the ownership group, but we'll keep having conversations and see if we can work with them on the way that looks.
Okay. Now, a couple of questions I had already asked of Attles and had my answers, that it could be-
We're short on time, sir. Just want to let you know.
Three to six months before they start their build, and it could be two years thereafter. There will be sidewalks and street crossings where they build that in order to get across the street?
Which one, I'm sorry, which one are we talking about now?
The Attles, where they're building on, what, 2241?
Washington Boulevard. Oh, I'm sorry. I was-
Yep.
Still thinking about Third Street corridor. That, I mean, I'm sure there will be, but I don't want to speak, I don't have the site plan in front of me, but I will let them address that if the mayor would like them to.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You guys addressed that specific issue at this point in time? Okay, why don't you go to the podium, please, and tell the council and our guests who you are, and if you can answer that specific question, that'd be great.
Mr. Attel, good evening, everyone. Yes, we do have sidewalks in the site plan. As far as crossing the road, that is something that has not really been discussed or proposed, but I'm sure we can work it, whatever that is. Liz, I can't remember, have we, anything about crossing the road?
No, we've never discussed that in the past.
Okay.
Well, that issue's been raised, and you'll be talking to people in the city, I feel sure, and hopefully that'll be resolved.
Yes, we are, we have been working with community, whatever city's asked us to do, and we've done that, so we don't mind working that through.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Attel.
Any other question? I think I answered a couple of your questions already.
Yes, you sure did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bob Harris?
Bob Harris, 429 South Second Street. Good evening to council and the citizens of audience. This evening, I would like to ask council and the city that we have $1.2 million designated for street repaving in the Second Ward. I would like to see that money spent within the next two years and our streets paved. Now, I know that's a big question to ask. We were due to have some paving done this year, but due to some circumstances, that won't happen this year. But I do not want to get down the road and not have that $1.2 million spent before we decide to do another levy on street repair. We back that, and I'd like to see that done. I know that there are other projects that we have that may come before, but I'm asking to move ahead and make sure that we get the street paving done in the Second and the Fourth Ward. We are due to evaluate the streets in the Fourth Ward this coming Friday, and I appreciate the time that the city spends to make that happen. So what I'm asking might be a big reach, but I'd like to see that done. Second, I would like to thank all of those who helped the award ceremony we had for the Second Ward. And in the process of putting that together and working with Councilman Lauer, well, I had a lot of fun, and at the same time, you know, we do have some disagreements that we talk about, but it's been one heck of an experience just having him come in the neighborhood and work within the Second and the Fourth Ward and some other, you know, of the 17-strong neighborhoods. What I'm going to tell you is something that you've heard from me before. I believe that we ought to have each councilperson over at least two of the wards represent, representing those wards and working closely with them. I think it is one heck of an experience to get out in the neighborhood, to see the neighborhood, to make that contact with the people in the neighborhood and hear their concerns. It's been a great experience, and I hope that we continue to do what we're doing and to make a major difference, because I think, as we raise the city where Spooky Nooks is concerned, that we raise all of the city at the same time. You say, well, Bob Harris, how do you do that? Well, I'm willing to sit down with you, and we can brainstorm and make that happen. So once again, Lauer, I want to say to you, I really appreciate you, and I'm going to promote that boxing match between you and the city manager. If the city doesn't have a problem, we're going- If the city doesn't have a problem, we're going to make a lot of money.
Bob, I don't want to hurt him, but
Well, I tell you, either way you go, I'm going to make money off of that fight. So, thank you, appreciate you, and I will be back, and I'll try not to give you, you know, too hard of a time, but we want to make a difference and make a change, and we want to be able to see it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your leadership, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I pulled up the Street Levy website, I just have a quick question for Rich Engel. It looks like in the Riverview neighborhood that we have done some paving on Monument, Herm, and Stevens, but is Front Street scheduled for this year or next year?
It has been this year's program, but it will not happen until next year, we'll be doing the concrete work first.
Okay, so the concrete work will start this year or next year?
This year.
So, concrete work this year and paving will be, and that's front from Pershing to the railroad? Okay, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Thank you.
Josh, before I leave, I will be at your office every day until I get that out. If you do not see me, I'm going to be loud.
Joel is available most hours of the day and night, so.
Well, you have to be available for this one. Thank you, I'm good.
Thank you, Bob, have a good night.
Joshua, I'm going to put some money on you.
I'm glad someone is.
But wait a minute, I'm going to train, I'm going to train louder.
Good evening. We now go to, excuse me, we might go to consent agenda, and that includes all staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, informational report, including the request for funding from the Haymont Vision Commission, and information reports on May 2023 financial report and May 2023 investment report. We're going to go to the committee of the whole so that we can ask questions on council to various city staff, and I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed and the committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second.
Let's make council member Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go in the committee of the whole at 7:13. Will please lead us in then, Mr. City Clerk?
Absolutely. So, for the first three items, the caucus agenda will be having a presentation by our planning director, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. The first one is a big project that we've been working on for a while. It is a proposed rezoning of the Riverview neighborhood. It is, we are proposing to rezone it to the traditional neighborhood zoning districts that you've heard a lot about over the past three or four years. It's a big area, it's 195 acres, 1,310 parcels, so it's a big project, and my coworker, Ed Wilson, has had many, many meetings in the neighborhood leading up to this rezoning proposal, and it came to city, or it came to a planning commission a few weeks ago, and ultimately out of the 1,310 parcels, we had, I think, five or six residents come and talk about different properties that they had questions about, and all have been resolved. So, we are at a, as far as we know, we have tried to do, Ed Wilson has done a very wonderful job communicating with the, with the neighborhood, and we think that we've gotten to a very good place on this proposal. And I'll just show you an overview. So, this is a section of the neighborhood, and what you see here is a mixture of multifamily residential zoning and suburban-style community business district zoning, and we are proposing to change, and some industrial zoning as well, and if you know this neighborhood, which I know you all do, this is not an industrial neighborhood, it's not a multifamily neighborhood, and it's not a suburban shopping center neighborhood either. So, we have created these zoning districts that better fit the character of this neighborhood, which is single-family, walkable, urban, and, and so we're proposing to change it to the traditional neighborhood zoning that we've been going through, and this is the sixth neighborhood that we've done this in. So, you see the proposed new zoning here for the northern portion. And then this is the middle area of the rezoning proposal. A new proposed zoning, predominantly single-family. And then, we actually included Vora Technology Park and some other portions down here south of Knights Bridge, and this was zoned industrial, and we're proposing it, proposing to zone it office. Do you have any questions about this project?
No, I just want to say the zoning hearing process worked because the five or six residents who had unique situations were all taken care of, they spoke up, and then things were resolved, so that was, that system really did work, so thank you.
The next one is a much smaller project. We're proposing, the Department of Infrastructure and the Planning Department are working together, to propose changing our Sanitary Sewer Main Impact Connection Fee. It doesn't, the total cost doesn't change, but we've had a number of residential developers ask us to reconsider when we receive the payment. Right now, it's structured to receive 75% of the payment during the plating process and 25 during the building permit process. I think that made sense for a while, but for reasons mostly development patterns, it does, we decided that it doesn't make sense anymore, or at the very least, it's a neutral change for us that developers have requested. So, we are proposing to change it so that 20% is due at plat submission and 80% is due at the building permit process when the development actually happens. Any questions about this one?
Thank you.
And finally, alley vacation on Skillman Alley. This is something you've seen before, but it stalled at the back end of the project because of some things with the applicant, so we wound up just taking it on and having it be a city-initiated alley vacation. Any questions on this one?
Thank you.
Then the final presentation for the committee of the whole will be a presentation by our Executive Director of External Services, Mr. Tom Vanderhorst.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Tom Vanderhorst, the Executive Director of External Services, and it's a, it's a good night tonight. I mean, we have Crawford Hoying reps in the building tonight at Omro's project here, and here we're talking about the former Anthony Wayne Hotel that's turned into the Hilton Tapestry Hotel. So, what we're doing today, this is one caucus item, is to establish the TIF for the former Anthony Wayne Hotel. Where is this? This is a parcel map. I think everybody knows where this is, it's at 10 South Monument, it's at the corner of Front and High Street. It's a former Anthony Wayne, I think you've seen some construction going on with it for the last couple of months. I think it's where Councilperson Vaughn's wedding was, if I remember right, it's, it's a very pop, or it's a very important building in our community. So, what are we doing on this? You know, before Nancy Nix came up here, I thought I had the most complicated financial presentation tonight, but this seems like a walk in the park after that. We're going to do, there's three prongs to this. This is one caucus report, but you're going to see three pieces of legislation come forward to you. The main one that we're talking about today is the Tax Increment Financing District, the ORC Code, if you want to look it up, is 579.41. The .41 is important because that code allows us to put money back into the private capital stack, and as part of that, we have to be in the chain of title for this building, so you're going to see that building go into the city's name and back out. We're not buying the building back, it's just something we have to do as part of the statute to put money back into it. This is something that's already been approved by the Hamilton City School District, and I can't stress enough how important their partnership is when we pull deals like this off, because these deals are very complicated. So, the way this structure is, the pilots, which are the payment lieu of taxes, are going to be equal to the amount of real estate taxes, are going to be rebated back to the developer. The developer is going to directly pay the school district $35,000 a year, so, I mean, just think about it right now, the school district's getting about $18,000 a year off this project. They'll continue to keep the baseline of whatever they would get before, plus the $35,000 that they're getting directly from the developer in years six through 30. And we're also going to do, and the school district has already approved this, and you'll see this agreement come forward, a community reinvestment area, it's five years, 100% abatement that was part of the compensation agreement in the TIF legislation that the school district already passed. And then finally, you're going to see two pieces of legislation come forward, one for the petition and one for approving the petition, there's going to have to be a public hearing on the enrollment into the community authority, and I have sales tax and lodging tax in quotes because it's not really those, it's a facilities use charge, but they're collected using the same formula as the Ohio Revised Code has for the sales tax and for the lodging tax. So, it's pretty complicated, again, not as complicated as the earlier presentation, but something that's really important, I mean, you know it's a small community when you can pull a picture of Billy Yanks and see people in the background that you see, there's Sonya Cramble in the upper left-hand corner of that, but this is AWH Hamilton Vision, this is Matt Ologis' project, and, and what's nice to see is this is his second project in the city of Hamilton, just like Jim Cohen, as being part of CMC Properties, you saw him do the Markham now, Rossville Flats, they're coming back to do second projects. And why are we doing this? This, it's a historic building, they're challenging, they need incentives, this had historic tax credits, it had some incentives from the CIC, the school district, they're, they're complicated. And as Omro said earlier in his presentation, keep tourists in town. I have a new chip sent in, and he showed me how he used animation on this presentation, so bear with me. The hotel capacity is needed, and it's a cool project with a Fortune 500 flag with the Hilton. And when is this going to happen? I talked to the developer this morning, construction's supposed to begin, just, I mean, in about 30, 45 days, and at the very latest, he's hoping that he will be open in the summer of 2024, but just to hedge this, at the end of 2024 at the latest. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, it is a cool project.
That's a summation of our presentations, Mayor.
I'll set the motion that the committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to council member Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, hearing none. Committee of the whole is closed at 7:23. I'll set the motion, the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to council member Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Regular meeting is reconvened at 7:24, now accept a, a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
With the exception of the items so noted, council received the reports of the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second.
Mr. Council member Vaughn, second by council member Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, hearing none. That motion is carried, we now go to the public hearing section of the agenda, now I'll set the motion, the regular meeting be recessed and the public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to council member Nab, second by council member Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, hearing none, that motion is also carried, it is 7:24, now go into the public hearing.
A public hearing regarding approving the 2024 tax budget.
Anyone you honestly wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the 2024 tax budget? Anyone you honestly wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the 2024 tax budget? We had a book to sign if you wish to speak as well, and everybody signed the book for the record. Anyone on council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Nab.
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion to council member Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:25, I'll set the motion, that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by council member Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
7:25, when we go back into the regular meeting, we now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and accept the motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Pullman.
Make a motion, I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to it being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion to council member Pullman, second by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, hearing none. Motion is carried at 7:26, we go to pending legislation, second reading of ordinance orders involving the Crawford Hoying Development.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a development agreement related to certain real property located at 555 North Third Street and 134 Hensel Place, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011. Crawford Hoying Development Partners LLC developer, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Mr. Council member Vaughn, second by council member Fear. Any discussion or comments from Matt from Crawford Hoying?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Matthew Starr, 6640 Riverside Drive, Dublin. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, every time I come into Hamilton, I, I learned something new, so I learned about a boxing match tonight, so this is an exciting evening.
I learned about it tonight, too, but
Seems like a good opportunity for another community event. So, appreciate the opportunity and consideration, we're really excited to get going, and obviously with this approval of the legislation tonight, we're set up to close on August 9th and move forward, so, thank you, any questions?
Any questions?
Very excited.
Thanks for coming down, Matt, we're really looking forward to this.
Thanks for having us, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any comments from council at this time? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordnance adopted, 7-0.
Agenda item number seven, second reading of the ordinance involving 2251 Northwest Washington Boulevard Development.
An ordinance approving the preliminary and final development plan for 2251 Northwest Washington Boulevard for the development of two commercial multi-tenant retail buildings on property zone BPD Business Plan Development, MNR Investments LLC applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
The council member Nab, second by council member Vaughn. Any comments or discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call?
Pullman?
Obstain.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Obstain.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
We now go to agenda item number eight, second reading of the ordinance.
The ordinance is adopted, 5-0 with two abstentions.
That really makes it a better, better reading, thank you.
Thank you.
Good reading. Now go to agenda item number eight, second reading of the ordinance involving the Quadricycles Pilot Program.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Part III Traffic Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by adding Chapter 350 Commercial Quadricycle Pilot Program relative, relative to authorizing and regulating commercial quadricycles in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Council member Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any comments, discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordnance adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. Now go to agenda item number nine, two readings of ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and set of ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion to council member Pullman, second by council member Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Thank you, second reading of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.[1792.76] Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Item number 10 is first reading of emergency ordinance involving 20 High Street Development.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyances, and related actions related to certain real property located at 20 High Street, located in the city's urban renewal area. City of Hamilton seller, Acumen Development Partners LLC and Spectrum Investment Group LLC developers, first reading.
You, bless you.
Thank you.
Go to agenda item number 11, first reading of an ordinance involving permanent utility easement, Thoreau Drive.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a permanent utility easement at 251 Thoreau Drive, located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio. Jeffrey K. and Kimberly R. Huff, property owner, City of Hamilton, purchaser, first reading.
You, go to agenda item number 12, first reading of an ordinance involving home program, art plan funds.
An ordinance accepting, appropriating, and budgeting up to $1,408,58 for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 Home Partnership Investment Program, American Rescue Plan Funds, first reading.
Thank you. Then, item number 13, a resolution involving a public health emergency preparedness grant.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of funds awarded under the Ohio Department of Health Bureau of Preparedness, health titled Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant in the total amount of $31,857.51 through a cooperative agreement with the Butler County General Health District for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. We now go to number 14, a resolution involving State Route 128.
A resolution for preliminary consent legislation with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, relative to allowing ODOT to resurface State Route 128, located within the City of Hamilton Corporation limit, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a local public agency, LPA, agreement with ODOT to allow ODOT to resurface city portion of State Route 128. ODOT Project HAM/BUT, State Route 128-1, 0.75/0.00PID-102544.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion or comments on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We now go to agenda item number 15, which is a resolution adopting the tax budget 2024.
A resolution adopting the tax budget for the City of Hamilton, Ohio for the fiscal year 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Nab. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 16, which is a resolution involving a gas main replacement project.
A resolution authorizing grant applications to the U.S. Department of Transportation, DOT, Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, PHMSA, relative to funding for the 2023 PHMSA Grant Miscellaneous Gas Main Replacement Project, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a resolution, make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Agenda item number 17, resolution involving accepting a grant, $3 million from the American Rescue Plan Award to Butler County.
A resolution authorizing, directing, and accepting a grant not to exceed $3 million from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 awarded to Butler County as a sub-recipient between Butler County, Ohio and Hamilton City Council, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion on this? Comments, none? Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Now, go to the audience of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything this evening.
The audience of the city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
In the upcoming school year, we're going to have a big game coming up. Mr. Nab and Mr. Mohler met with Dan Bates today. Getting together in the beginning, the start of a pep rally between the two schools. Hopefully, we can get everything verified in the next couple of weeks. But I appreciate Mayor Mohler and Tim Nab stepping in my place today. But this is an exciting event. This is, this was traditionally a great game in the City of Hamilton that everybody looked forward to. I think with how everything is coming together in our city, this is a great opportunity to celebrate both schools and what they give to our community. This is an exciting event. We're expecting a sellout. Please get your tickets quickly. However, I think the pep rally is gonna add something to it that is unique, different. Will be setting the narrative for the schools working together in the community in the future. And I think this is a great opportunity for the City of Hamilton. I'm excited to be a part of it, both as the city council member and as a coach and as a teacher in the Hamilton City Schools. This is, I don't know how long this will last. This will be a very competitive game in the next two years. I do see a lot of, I do see a lot of momentum moving forward with Hamilton football. And Bates has had some success here lately. But I am very excited about this event. I cannot wait for this to go down. And I'm really excited about the community involvement that this can bring. Appreciate everybody working on this.
The ceremonial coin's gonna have Coach Joel Lauer's face on it. Put it up in the air. I'm not sure what's gonna happen.
Is that a wooden deck?
Boys and Girls Club will be using this event and sharing their vision, but also be a fundraiser for Boys and Girls Club.
Joel, can you say the date? What date? Is it already announced?
I don't think we've announced any of that yet. I think we need to wait for the letter to come out from...
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Location as well has not been announced.
I think they're gonna wait to announce that, too, until more things are approved.
All right. Anybody else on council?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.